All right, folks are ready to go. Oops, that was a deadened sound. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 17, 2018, meeting of the Edina City Council. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindol.
Here.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Anybody have any changes or additions to that agenda? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
So moved.
Got a motion and second to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Community comment, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council this evening on a matter not otherwise on the agenda? Good evening.
Hi, Lori Groetz, 5513 Park Place. I'm here to ask the council again to please audio and videotape the HRA meetings like they used to do in the past. Currently, it is only an audio recording, and you put a burden on the residents requiring them to file a data request in order to get that recording. I attended the HRA meeting yesterday morning at 7:30. I found it difficult to hear, had to put my hand behind my ear. I believe the microphones on the podiums were not turned on, and several times when the mayor was speaking, he forgot to turn on his microphone. If I couldn't hear here in the building, how could people hear it when it was being recorded? I've heard many reasons why they can't do it, that they prefer to meet in the community room. I suppose you could do it with a smartphone on a pedestal or something. I've heard that it costs too much money, could be $5,000. Well, the city used to do it. If you take a look at some of the expenditures from the HRA, earlier this year, the HRA spent $20,000 for shuttle service to shuttle employees that worked at 50th and France so that they didn't have to park in the ramp, so that customers would have more parking space. The HRA spent about $20,000 over two months. There were four people that regularly rode the shuttle. $5,000 is not too much to ask to tape and record the HRA meetings. You're making a lot of important decisions right now for the growth of our city and the redevelopment, and I think it's unfair not to do it. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Ms. Groetz. Talk about that issue.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South, Edina. I want to comment on property values and property taxes and development. If one goes to the city website and clicks on the assessors department, they'll find a page that shows the total estimated fair market value of all the properties within the boundaries of Edina going back to 2008. And currently, for 2018, which is the most recently available assessment, the fair market value of all the properties in Edina are about $12.38 billion. Now, to get down to taxable values, you have to deduct the homestead taxes and the values of properties that are owned by government, other government institutions that are tax-exempt, and make adjustments for properties that are owned by charities and nonprofits. So that $12.38 billion is not the taxable base, it's the fair market value base. But in any event, when the real estate recession began to hit in 2008, property values were $10.1 billion, and they slumped down to a low of $8.93 billion in the next four years, and then took another two and a half years to get back to where they were in 2008. Since then, they've been climbing fairly steadily. But the 76 percent of the total market value for Edina comes from residential properties, and 24 percent comes from commercial, industrial, and apartment properties. You seem, you, the council, seem to be on a mission from God or somebody to approve any kind of development that'll raise the property tax base. If you continue to do that, you're going to destroy the goose that laid the golden egg, because the goose that laid the golden egg is the residential properties. And if you build new apartment projects because some developer wants to make a lot of money, or because he can, or because you want to hit some magical mark of $14 billion by 2020, or whatever it is, and you start destroying the residential values of single-family and duplex and townhomes, eventually, you will pollute the market, which is the reason that people want to live in Edina. So you're at a tipping point now, and based on the difficulty in getting property development financing in the city of Minneapolis, one could argue that we are in the beginning of a mild, hopefully, but a recession nonetheless. So you need to think about what you're doing, because the more buildings that you approve that will impinge on the value of residential property, eventually, you'll kill the very reason that people want to live here.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenz. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Dyke, that's B-R-Y-A-N, last name D-Y-E.
And your address, Mr. Dyke?
I'm not sure which one, but 6820 Creston Road is one of them, 4,000 Mayville Drive is another, and 6412 Indian Hills Road is another one. So I got a few properties in Edina.
Okay, thank you.
Ready?
I am, yes, we are.
Okay, I've been working with the planning commission, trying to get a variance approved at the lot at 6412 Indian Hills Road, and it's kind of been a little bit of a nightmare, to say the least, because Indian Hills, as we all know, is a little bit of a different area. The topography out there is very interesting. It's not a 50 by 70 wide lot by 120, or anything like that. There's hills, there's lots of trees. I've been asked to do some drawings and some stuff that I can't even get my architects to do. The surveyors have told me, you've got to be kidding me if they want that stuff. I just don't agree with it. What I'm trying to do is raise my house up, so it's level with the street. And the neighbor's lot is about two acres, my lot is about half an acre, and the other neighbor is a little over an acre. So with the codes we have in place today, it basically means I have to sit my house on the back of the lot, which makes absolutely no sense. It would make the neighborhood look bad. I've had someone out there to take a look at it, to give me their opinion, and yes, we do have to go through, we do have codes, we do have all that great stuff, we have the great one-foot rule, which I think is a little ridiculous, to be honest with you. Let's see. I just want you all to know, it's really fun to go home every night for a whole month and tell my kids, no, we can't build the new house. The city wants me to make up a crazy drawing about trees in front of my lot, in front of the lots that we want to be able to build on, kids, I'm sorry. I'm kind of getting sick and tired of it. I'm also sick and tired of, I build houses, I'm a licensed contractor in the state of Minnesota, I'm sick and tired of the blanket codes that we have in the city. All the codes that we have are for all the lots, and I think that's a little bit of a joke, because not every lot's the same, especially out in the Indian Hills area. Those lots are completely different, we have all these wonderful codes that we use, and I don't think they're fair. I've also been trying to help out, right off of France, I've been trying to help out a nonprofit hospice, trying to give him a little bit of the land, so he can make some adjustments on his property, because he's having problems during the winter months, getting some of the people that have deceased out of there, and I've watched it with my own two eyes. It's a little bit sad. So I've been trying to help him out, again, working with the planning commission, and I've gotten nowhere, which is also sad. I think maybe we need to take a look at helping out one individual, instead of worrying about building those huge apartment complexes, those huge condo complexes. I'm asking for a little bit of help, I'm asking the planning commission to come out to visually see it. I've been told that I need to create a picture, so they can get the feeling. Well, I wish they would just get in the car, drive out there, maybe get plenty of a feeling. And also, I think we need to do, rather than build apartment complexes, we should consider building a community center. I go to all these swimming events, all these other events, I'm a volunteer coach, I'm on a board for the Basketball Association, and it's kind of a joke when I go to all these other little cities, and they have this wonderful, beautiful community center, and then we come here, and it's like, man, this is Edina. You would sure think we would have a community center that people really want to come to. So next time you think about doing something over in Southdale, I know it's the first mall, but maybe we should sit back and consider making that into a community center that people would want to come here for. You've got two hotels over there now, they can stay in. Thank you.
Mr. Dyke, I take it you meant you were working with the planning department, not the planning commission?
Planning department, sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
That's just our day.
Better sit.
Yeah, he's just staff.
Stay still until we're finished with residents, you're throwing us off here. I want to make sure we give you a chance to speak, maybe you didn't want to speak. All right, we're going to close this portion of the agenda, and I think we've got, I don't know, Director Teague, when you want to address this, with the council or the staff level, or, I mean, Manager Neil?
Well, I-
I think we've gotten some correspondence from Mr. Dyke.
We have, Your Honor, and in light of the complexity of the various issues he's raised, a lot of them have some regulatory complexity to them, I think what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Teague if he could prepare a response back to you, but it's going to be difficult for him to do a kind of impromptu analysis in response on that tonight.
Sure. And then, thank you, and then with respect to Ms. Groetz encouraging us to do both audio and videotaping of the HRA meetings, maybe you want to address that?
I do, I think it's probably a good idea. I mean, we're starting to get a number of people now at our HRA meetings that make it not as comfortable in the smaller room upstairs. It may be something we're going to need to do, just because of the number of people we have in our meetings now. So I have given Ms. Bennerata a heads-up about that, she's going to look at it from an operational standpoint, and let me know how we can do it.
I think the last couple of meetings that we've had down here, it doesn't seem, it's a visceral sort of thing, but it doesn't seem right that we're not recording it for some reason.
Yeah, understand.
Yeah, I mean, the video portion of it, we're getting the audio, but, anyway, okay, so that's one issue. And then, Mr. Lorenz just asked us to be careful about not destroying residential values, and I think everybody on this council, everybody that works for the city, is, that's very much in the forefront of their mind, keeping residential values high. So, all right, let's move on to the next portion of the agenda, and that is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety?
So moved, second.
Got a motion, second, to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Then on to special recognitions and presentations. Manager Neil, we've got a fire ops presentation this evening, and I think you want to lead this off.
I do, thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. We have a representative with us from our fire department tonight, Lieutenant Sean White. Lieutenant White is also a member of Local 1275 of the International Association of Firefighters, that's the collective bargaining group that represents our firefighter paramedics, and he has got a rare opportunity to invite you two tonight. Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I have a couple of things I'd like to hand out, is this okay if I?
Yeah, Lieutenant, thank you. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you, sir.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I appreciate, along with City Manager Scott Neal accommodating me on the agenda tonight, that's very gracious. Like Mr. Neal mentioned, I'm a lieutenant with the fire department and the vice president of the Local 1275. Local 1275 is the IFF local union that represents our professional firefighters within the city. It's 1275's honor to be hosting the Minnesota Professional Firefighters Convention this year, this coming fall. The MPFF convention is an opportunity for union firefighters from all across the state to come and educate and advance leadership, and opportunities along those lines. So in conjunction with this convention, the Local 1275 will be hosting a fire ops. And what fire ops was created to do was to provide some insight into the challenges and stresses that are faced by the paramedics and firefighters, and things that they see on a daily basis. So really, what this is, is an opportunity for city representatives, as well as those within administration of a city, to get a firsthand look at what it is we do on a regular basis, and probably more important than that, get a hands-on participation in scenarios that will truly expose you to the demands of our career. So really, what this is, is your chance to be firefighter for a day. And so what I am doing is I'm inviting you, Mr. Mayor, the entire council, City Manager Scott Neal, to join Edina Local 1275 in the fire ops of 2018 on September 23rd. So I've handed out the official invites, I'll be following up with some more information, that it's a little more detailed, and kind of explain further in the process of how this will move forward. And I very much look forward to the opportunity, come this September, to work alongside you, and kind of demonstrate and show off all the many things that our firefighter paramedics do for the city of Edina. So I thank you all for your time and your support.
Yeah, it's a beautifully done invitation.
Yes, I, they did a great job.
And so, any questions for the lieutenant?
Just, he can take credit for the invitation, so.
I have to give those to Secretary Treasurer Davy Muller, he did a very good job.
Nice job. Look forward to more information.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, sir.
All right, next, Manager Neil, we've got the Explore Edina Annual Report, and I think you wanted to make some preliminary comments.
We do, thank you, Your Honor. I'm a member of the Explore Edina Board and the Board of the Chamber, and every part of the agreement that the city has with the Chamber of Commerce for distributing our lodging taxes to the chamber, is that they make a presentation to the council once each year, and give you some background on that relationship, but also, really, some detail on how we spent the money, and what was accomplished by spending that money in the community. And so, I'd like to introduce Lori Severson and Shelley Lowberg. I'm not sure, Lori, how are you, how you're going to do the presentation, but that, they are going to give this, the annual presentation to the council tonight.
Thank you, Manager Neil.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. My name is Lori Severson. I'm president of the Edina Chamber of Commerce and Explore Edina. Joining me this evening, as Mr. Neal mentioned, is Shelley Lowberg. Shelley is director of Explore Edina. We also have Joel Hilgendorf, who is our current board chair, and Tim Murphy, incoming board chair, joining us this evening. And any of us would be more than happy to answer any questions that may arise this evening. What I'd like to do, I'm going to start off by giving you a brief overview of the financial status of Explore Edina, looking at 2017, and giving you a little bit of an overview for 2018. And then Shelley is going to spend just a few minutes showing you some of the things that we've done from the marketing perspective. You may remember that in January of this year, we legally combined the organizations of Explore Edina and the Edina Chamber of Commerce. And one of your questions, when we talked to you about combining those two groups, was how are we going to handle the financials? You wanted to make sure that the revenues that were generated by Explore were kept separate from the revenues and the expenditures from the Chamber of Commerce. So in your packet this evening, in addition to the brief overview that I'm providing, you do have a full set of the financials from 2017. You have the budget for 2018, along with the current financials for January through June of 2018. All of the Explore financials are kept completely separate from the chamber, it's one legal entity, but the financials are very separate. So if you have any questions, feel free to throw those out as we go along as well. The slide that is up right now takes a quick snapshot of what our peer visitors bureaus are experiencing as far as their revenues and some of their key expenses compared to Explore Edina for 2017. Also, in your packet, you're going to see this exact same information in an Excel spreadsheet that goes back to our inception in 2014, and takes a look at these key points as well for each of the years. But we do compare well against our peers. When you're looking at the revenue, our peers are right around $468,000, and we, this past year, were at 444. Again, we only have two hotels that these numbers are based on. Our peers, most of them have more than two properties, but they may be smaller in scale. Our expenses are a little higher. Last year, we had the Super Bowl, so we threw in a little more for some of those projects and sponsorships last year, but we're pretty close to our peers on that level as well. We do very well with personnel, and part of that is that you're sharing the expense of my salary with the Chamber of Commerce, so we're coming in at 29 percent compared to 42 percent. Occupancy, we're pretty close, we're slightly higher, but some of that has to do with the fact that our peers are smaller, and the rents and the leasing rates that they're paying are substantially less than what we have here in Edina. And then our months of cash on hand, every year, we try to increase that. Again, in 2018, we'll be adding another property, so our hope is we can bump that up to get to about 5.7 months of emergency cash on hand, and eventually get to that 6 or 6.5, even 7, just to play it safe. And then you see there are unrestricted net assets as well. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Shelley, if you have any specifics on the financials, you can take a look at those sheets that go a little more in-depth. There's also a piece in there that is color-coded, and it takes a look at our revenue going back to 2014, color-coded green for an increase year-over-year versus the red as a decrease. So Shelley?
Thank you, Ms. Severson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm just going to quickly go over some of our marketing activities that we engaged in in 2017. Please feel free to stop me if you have any questions as I go through this. Our demographic that we have a tendency to target is female. In the world of travel and retail, females are the decision-makers, and they're the researchers when researching travel. And so, we tend to target female, so when we're choosing print and digital media, if I can add in all of those different demographics, I definitely do that. Some of the print media that we do are in markets like Rochester. We do some local things with Minneapolis-St. Paul Magazine, we do some things in Wisconsin, we have also been in Iowa and the Dakotas as well, kind of in the general five-state area. Generally, I like to target outside of the Twin Cities area, because we do want to generate hotel revenue. Our digital media includes content marketing articles. I'll just take a moment and explain what that is, because it's kind of a hot thing in digital media right now. And it is, it is online promotion, so it is internet advertising, but what I do is I work with a company to develop articles about how to experience our community. And usually, they're themed, so they might be, how do you experience the best shopping and dining in Edina, or how to have a girlfriend getaway in Edina, or what to do with your family in Edina, that could be seasonal. This year, we've actually spent some time talking about how to plan your wedding in Edina, and concentrating on the high-end home furnishing markets here as well. So these are articles that get written, the nice thing about that is it drives a ton of website traffic because of the online presence and promotion, and it increases our time on site. So what that means is, instead of someone coming to our site, doing a little research, and maybe leaving after a minute or two, they're spending three to five minutes on our site, reading an article, and they can click out to different stakeholders in the community. We also do paid e-blasts, followed with retargeting, Facebook boosts and ads. We added some video assets, so we're doing some pre-roll video. Our girlfriend getaway article had the highest engagement last year on our website. We do do some targeted broadcast media, usually in a market, usually local or in a market like Rochester. We have promoted the Edina Art Fair. That's also an event because of, because we consider it a tourism event, and because of the amount of people it attracts to the community, we do sponsor that event. Social media and Facebook, it looks like we had a little over a half a million impressions. And again, I'll note that the Art Fair and the Edina fall into the Arts Festival, get the highest engagement on Facebook. That's because people start sharing it, tagging someone they want to go to the event with, and it just organically gets a lot of impressions. Our reach is 258,049. In 2017, we had over 4,000 clicks. We increased page likes by 176 and had 701 post reactions. This is an example of what some of our print ads look like. For the Super Bowl, this ad with the white background with all the logos at the bottom is an example of a cooperative ad, so we placed this in what was the official Super Bowl guide that was distributed at the airport and at special events, and we did this in partnership with the 50th and France Association, Southdale Center, and Galleria to promote shopping while visitors were here. These are examples of digital ads that would appear online. And just to give you an overview of website traffic in 2017, we had about an 8 percent increase year-over-year. I always do comparisons year-over-year. And one thing I'll note is that typically, a visitor bureau website is always earning new visits. So it's not like the city website, where residents come again and again and again to get information. It's generally a one-stop shop to be inspired to visit a community. We do get repeat visits from people locally, but again, we are trying to target people outside of the community as well. So our tendency is to have over 90 percent new visits all year long, which is actually awesome. Like I mentioned, the content marketing does increase time on site dramatically. Emails and organic search are our biggest drivers of web traffic, as well as the digital marketing programs that I mentioned, and we are substantially growing website click-throughs through social media as well. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Lowberg on that portion of it? Okay, good.
Lori, do you want to talk about this slide, or would you like me to go over it?
Yeah, I can go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. So there are a couple of key points that we want to bring to your attention for projects that we're going to be working on for 2019, that may be a little different from what we've done in the past. As I mentioned earlier, we'll continue to add a little bit to our emergency reserves, but we also want to focus a little more on the girlfriend and romantic getaways, and working with the Weston to put some packages together for Taste of Edina. This year, we saw quite a few girlfriends coming in in groups, so what we'll do is we'll package that with a hotel stay, and then come up with activities for them for the Thursday and Friday, and they can be home by the weekend for all of the kid's sports activities, so they're not missing out on that. We're also going to begin to put together a marketing strategy for a medical and well-being destination project, and I'm in the process of coming up with the details to host a national-wide leadership conference at the Weston in partnership with the University of Minnesota, Minnesota State Mankato, and a couple of other partners to pull that together. I think it will bring some wonderful recognition to the community in what we're doing in regard to leadership. And then we're also going to begin to deliver the messaging for Braemar. We've all been excited and waiting for that show, Shelley's going to take off, and try to bring a new recognition to what we've done there, in addition to working with the 50th and France Association and all the changes. And Shelley, as a matter of fact, has had some meetings with the 50th and France Association, as well as their public relations agency, to see if there is a way that we can supplement what they're doing from a marketing perspective, to make sure that we're trying to generate traffic between now and the completion of all of the construction on 50th and France. So those are some of- So those are some of our activities. I think any of the other information, whether it be financial or specifics on marketing, would be included in your packet.
I do just want to mention one thing. If you're home in time tonight and you catch the Fox News after the All-Star Game, I did do a taped interview at 50th and France today, talking about the development and talking about how people can get around the area and take care of, or take advantage of the Free Valley parking, and that we don't want people to be discouraged from visiting the area, that we really feel like it's going to breathe new life into the neighborhood. We do paid quarterly media placements with an agency here locally in the Minnetoka area, and generally, there are television interviews. Sometimes they're live, sometimes they're taped. We might be promoting the Edina Art Fair or our Style Edina Fashion Event, or sometimes it's holiday shopping, or as this development issue came up, we felt like it was important to devote some of our impressions to that, too. But we get overall, between online article mentions and TV interviews and radio interviews, when all that stuff is shared online, we generate about 10 million online impressions in 2017.
Terrific. Yeah, great.
Awesome. Thank you.
So we've got a new hotel coming online sometime. Have to think at this year.
Mid-September.
Pardon me?
Mid-September.
Mid-September?
Yes.
Okay, good. So do we have any projections there, or have you worked that into your budget, what you think we can do better than what we've been doing in the past or differently?
Yeah, as far as revenues?
What's anticipated revenue from the new hotel operation?
Yeah, so my projections, I'm comparing them to the Marriott Residence Inn, and if you look at the Residence Inn, they're contributing anywhere from $110,000 to $125,000 on an annual basis. Both Shelley and I anticipate for the Hilton, it may take them eight months to a year to get up to that speed, but certainly after a year, we hope to have an additional, at least, $110,000.
And anticipation on how to deploy that extra revenue? Have you thought about that yet?
We don't have specifics on that, but each year, we'll take a look at what our revenues are and what our priorities are for that coming year. It's been pretty stable. I mean, we've increased, but not to a great degree, so we wanted to make sure that all of the activities that we started in 2014 and '15, that we continue to build on those. But as we add the revenues, we'll certainly expand out on what we're trying to do. I know this year, we were inundated with local requests for sponsorships, and I think we struggled internally with that because those requests were coming in during the course of the year where we had our budget set already. And when Shelley sets the budget, she signs those contracts several months in advance, so it's very difficult to change midstream. But I think what we're hoping to do is as we increase our revenues, is work with the board to put a certain dollar amount in reserve for local types of activities, and then we can designate some subcommittee to look at those requests as they come in. So hopefully, we can do a little more of that as well.
All right, good. Thank you. Member Fisher?
I would just, so, great job.
Thank you.
I was happy to hear the partnership-type things you're doing with the hotel properties because I think that's the key here. And I was really happy to hear you talk about the focus outside the actual metro because those people aren't likely to stay in the hotels. And in my involvement in past years and this kind of thing, it's, you know, and especially to your last comment about the temptation always comes to, you know, there's always going to be requests for local groups for their local activities, and I think the filter always has to be, who's coming here from outside the community and staying in these hotels? Because the more you do to build the partnership and the, you know, the strength of the hotels, it's like that the life cycle keeps building. It's good for the hotels and it's great for our brand outside of Edina, so I was happy to hear that you're totally thinking that way.
Councilmember Fisher, thank you very much for that comment, and that's something that Shelley and I, it's top of mind for us constantly. The one thing about Edina and our two properties, we are so very fortunate to have leadership in those properties who are extremely involved in what we do. And right now, we have Jim Callahan from Wisherman Properties serving on our board, and Jim is so keen on making sure that we're giving Edina enough from a local perspective, so we want to make sure that we honor that support and do whatever we can for the properties as well. And Shelley, I don't know if you have anything to add regarding that topic?
Yeah, I think, you know, in the big picture, it's always important to look at marketing the city holistically. When people come here for day trips, that's also an economic impact, even if they're not staying in hotels. So I feel like we try to ride that fine line pretty carefully on focusing on outer markets so that we're reaching people that would potentially book a hotel stay, but with the knowledge that when people come and eat in our restaurants or attend events, and even if they're filling up their car with gas or stopping just to pick something up, that has an impact on our local merchants as well. And because of the wealth of the retail community here, foot traffic has sometimes been a concern for the retail entities, and so I would say that's another local feedback we get, is that, you know, maybe one of the malls is struggling with foot traffic, or 50th and France is, you know, some of the shops have struggled. So, you know, we try to be very active with everyone on social media. That's one way that's really easy for us to participate and share information, and then include those messages in the paid advertising that's going to the outside markets as well.
And we're also very cognizant of not playing favorites to make sure, on our retail side, we have three entities. We're fair to all of them, and I think to our credit, if I can brag a little bit, we've been very successful in bringing all three to the table and playing in the sandbox together where, you know, I think initially, they looked at each other as competitors. And our goal as we move forward is to expand outside of retail and hospitality and do that in other industry sectors as well.
Good. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Thank you.
Member Brendel.
Thanks. Well, I've been looking forward to this to find out just what 3% generates, and for two hotels on an annual basis to generate $445,000?
Yes, that is, I mean, two-thirds of that can be attributed to the Westin.
To the Westin, I understand that.
And their business travel.
I mean, that's amazing. And along with, along with that, and I know you feel this, is the responsibility to know how to use those dollars. So looking at the expenses against that 440, and the expenses were somewhere in the range of 440, and, I mean, that put my back up against a wall. How can that money go out so that quickly if it's raised in a year and then have over $400,000 worth of expenses? I don't know how you run a business that way, but, so that's one thing that stands out to me, and I will learn more about what's behind those numbers. But included with my comments is really the opportunity, I think, for Explore Edina to do something for Edina. And to, and you alluded to it, but I want to put some legs under it. I want to make sure that there is a set aside that's not a specific dollar amount but a percent, and say that this goes toward community events that not only provide for community gathering for everybody in Edina, but they also draw people here from other places. So I've started the conversation with Manager Neil, and so I will continue to do that and share with him what my specific ideas are, and then he can visit with the rest of the council and get their ideas. But I would hope that you'd be open to making sure that, honestly, this is a pot of money that is generated and it should benefit the entire community.
Yeah, we have no qualms about that at all, and we're more than happy to take a look at what that looks like. But I do want to comment regarding expenditures. Our philosophy and the philosophy of the board, and Joel and Tim, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but our goal is to spend the money. As a matter of fact, several comments have come up from the board. We put it in reserve, we want it there for emergency, but unlike some private businesses, our goal is not to collect the money and let it sit there. If there's a project that comes up, as with the Super Bowl, I think we were originally anticipating there to be a $10,000 to $15,000 revenue at the end of last year, and we spent that for Super Bowl. So our goal is not to let it sit there and accumulate. If something comes up, we want to spend it.
And you want to spend it to promote Edina?
Correct. Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, I would love to take a trip, but yes.
Make sure that qualifier is in there.
Right, right, yes, yes. We want to look at the activities, right.
Ms. Wilbur, you might want to comment a little bit on some of the things that you have been doing from an event standpoint, and I think one of your big events has been the fashion show.
Yes, so we did put together a cooperative fashion event with the retail entities. One of the things we did notice upon, you know, starting this organization was that those retail entities really did truly view each other as competitors, and, you know, here, I come along and I'm promoting the community as a retail destination, and so I'm trying to get them to all kind of see the big picture and see how everyone benefits when we do things together sometimes. And that's certainly not easy, especially with corporately-owned entities and then a smaller association, but I have really enjoyed kind of bringing everyone to the table for those conversations, and we are each year working to, you know, we've had three sell-out fashion events. We have a lot of local people attend that event, but we are getting people from Northfield and Rochester and Chaska, and I think we had some people from up north one year, and so we are seeing each year that we're reaching further and further with that message to promote Edina as a retail destination.
Good. All right. Anything else, folks? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For that update. Thank you. And gentlemen, thank you for being here as well. We know we're in good hands with you, you folks on the board.
Pardon?
We know we're in good hands with you folks on the board.
Great, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
They keep us in line.
All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We've got three public hearing matters this evening. The first matter is the potential issuance of a license to O'Reilly Custom Four LLC DBA Red River Kitchen, and they will be the operator at Braemar. So Ms. Mangan has this matter.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. O'Reilly Custom Four LLC came in and applied for a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor licenses. They will be operating as Red River Kitchen at our Braemar Golf Course Clubhouse at John Heron's Drive. As required by Edina code, we've published the necessary 10-day public hearing in the Edina sign current because this is a new intoxicating on-sale license. The city must conduct a public hearing today for this license. The Administration Department has reviewed all the submittals and find that they comply with all code requirements, and the appropriate fees were paid. The Health Department is satisfied with the applicant's plan. The Planning Department reviewed and signed off on the application, and the Police Department conducted a background check and found satisfactorily in favor of the applicant, so we put them before you for consideration this evening.
Good. Questions for Clerk Megan at this point in time? All right. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding the request of O'Reilly Custom Four LLC DBA Red River Kitchen for a on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor licenses? All right, hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Is there a second? We've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
I'll move the matter.
I will second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor licenses to O'Reilly Custom Four LLC DBA Red River Kitchen, to be operating at Braemar for the period beginning July 17, 2018, and ending March 31, 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. So are there some operators here or applicants? Thank you. Come on up and tell us a little bit about, I experienced a food truck a few weeks ago over on Halifax, I guess. You had great food over there for the Edina Community Foundation event.
Yeah, yeah, we've been, uh...
And introduce yourself, please.
Oh, my name is Matty O'Reilly. I own the Red River Kitchen, as well as some other restaurants in Minneapolis and four in St. Paul, so...
And one at the airport, I think.
And one at the airport, correct?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
He's the business manager.
You're hired.
I met your business manager for Braemar. I thought he was real sharp, so you don't need to replace him.
No, no, we've got a great team. We're very excited about the opportunity, and everyone's been supportive and welcoming, and it's a neat, unique opportunity to be a part of the community, and we couldn't be happier to be ready to get open.
And what's the timing on it, and what can folks expect to see from a menu standpoint?
Yeah, the menu, since it's not just a food truck anymore, we can elaborate on the full kitchen that we inherited and expand the menu pretty dramatically to delicious sandwiches, salads, tacos, burgers, appetizers, small plates, and then a component that's built for the golfer on the go, just kind of like a grab-and-go, quick-serve, you know, menu. Bringing in a lot of local Minnesota craft beer companies that we have relationships with to keep that in the community, doing some really neat things with the beverage program. And the timing is, we're looking at, at some point, as early as next week, we could be open. If we have our final health inspection tomorrow, we're anticipating that will go well. We're just in the middle of hiring and staffing and training, and it's going well. And, yeah, all in all, we're just, it's just a unique, cool opportunity. We're very excited to be a part of the community, so...
Great, good. I bet you're breathing a sigh of relief about that liquor license getting issued tonight.
Yes. It was, yeah, it's always, I've been through this process, you know, a number of times in different cities, and it's always an adventure. And, but no, it's with a clean record and a good track record of operating in other cities, I wasn't really nervous, but it is a relief, to be honest, so...
So we're really pleased to have you here, and...
Thank you very much.
We know that you'll do a wonderful job for our community.
We'll do our best. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. O'Reilly, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll see you out of Braemar in a week or so.
Thank you.
All right. Next public hearing matter is Public Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation Request involving properties at 5016 and 5020 Oak Bend Lane, and Director Milner has this matter.
Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you. This is a consideration of Resolution 2018-59, which would be a vacation of utility easements at the addresses of 5016 and 5020 Oak Bend Lane. So the two properties have negotiated a property line adjustment, which can be done by the Community Development Director, but the easements that are associated would need to be considered by the council. So this evening, the applicant is asked to, the council, to approve vacating the purple area here, highlighted there. The property line would move slightly to the south, and we would make this vacation contingent on them providing new easements along that line. You're probably asking why they don't match, because this whole corner back here of both parcels is a large drainage and utility easement. So we're asking the approval to vacate this contingent on the new ones in the green area. We've reviewed it with city staff, we have no issues with it, there's no utilities in that area, and the private utilities also don't have anything in it. So we're recommending that you approve the vacation embodied in Resolution 2018-59. I can stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner?
I do. Just one, and that's why? Why the request?
The property owners negotiated a property line switch, and I didn't ask why they...
Oh, okay, so it's just, it's their choice as property owners?
They're moving property lines, and the easements are attached to those lines.
Okay, so there's no technical reason on one property or the other that...
They didn't mention it in the application. They just asked to consider the vacation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other questions by council members at this point in time? Standby, Director Milner. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter or make an inquiry with the council? Seeing no one coming forward, hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing? Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 2018-59, which would vacate drainage and utility easements at 5016 and 5020 Oak Bend Lane contingent upon those homeowners providing a new public drainage and utility easement satisfactory to the city on their respective properties?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then our final public hearing matter this evening involves the conditional use permit request for Lifetime Athletic, and this is what we know as Lifetime Fitness at the Southdale Center. And Ms. Emily Bodicker, our Assistant City Planner, has this matter.
Yes. Mayor and members of the council, Lifetime Athletic is proposing rooftop dining at the building under construction at 250 Southdale Center, which is the former site of J.C. Penney's. A site planned for Lifetime and an adjacent multi-tenant building were reviewed and administratively approved by planning staff. A footing and foundation permit was issued, and a second building permit for the remainder of the work is currently under review. Lifetime Athletic is a three-story building plus a rooftop, which includes leisure pools, lounge seating, bocce courts, and the proposed rooftop bistro and restaurant. To accommodate the restaurant, or the request for a rooftop restaurant, a conditional use permit is required. 250 Southdale Center is 2.4 acres in size and is Zoned PCD III. In looking at traffic and parking at the site, specifically with the conditional use permit request, there would be no proposed changes in access or traffic to the site. The proposed rooftop restaurant would be utilized by Lifetime Athletic members and guests, and no additional traffic or parking needs would be generated with the approval of the rooftop restaurant. There have been a number of parking studies that have been completed with new development and redevelopment of the Southdale Center area, and the latest parking study that was completed included or accounted for the redevelopment of the J.C. Penney site for the Lifetime Athletic fitness facility, as well as other retail and office development. With those studies, it was deemed that the parking at Southdale was adequate. The Edina City Code requires a conditional use permit for rooftop restaurants meet the following requirements. Those requirements are, the hours of operation are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The amplified sound shall be subject to the city's noise ordinance. The rooftop dining area shall be kept in a clean and orderly manner. The restaurants must be adequately screened from adjacent residential uses. At the time the rooftop restaurant is established, a liquor license is required to serve alcohol within the restaurant area. Fencing or a guard shall be required per the state building code, and that lighting shall be permitted to the extent that it only illuminates the outdoor restaurant, or the rooftop restaurant area, and shall meet the city's code requirements. Staff believes that all those required criteria are met, and that the rooftop will generally be open seasonally from May until September. The hours that the applicant has proposed is between 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. There isn't any residential property within close proximity to the proposed rooftop restaurant. The Onyx Apartments are located over 500 feet away from Lifetime to the east. 66 West is located around 600 feet to the north, and One Southdale Place is roughly 800 feet located to the south of the proposed, well, of the Lifetime location. The rooftop restaurant will be open to members, like I said, and guests of Lifetime Athletic. It will not be open to the public, and based on this information, the parking is adequate for the rooftop restaurant, and no additional spaces will be required for parking. The Planning Commission had unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit at their June 27 meeting, and tonight, staff's recommendation is city council approve the conditional use permit for rooftop dining at Lifetime Athletic based on the findings that the proposed rooftop dining is not in close proximity to residential uses, and the proposal meets the conditional use permit criteria as laid out in the code, and that it is subject to the following conditions. Those conditions are that the hours of operation are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Amplified sound shall be subject to the city's noise ordinance. The rooftop dining area shall be kept in a clean and orderly manner. A liquor license would be required to serve alcohol. The fencing will be reviewed and be required to meet the Minnesota State Building Code. Lighting will meet the requirements of the city code, and that the rooftop dining area will be constructed per the plan's date stamped May 14 of 2018. So with that, I'll take any questions, and Scott Ferguson with Lifetime is also here on behalf of the applicant.
All right, good. Questions for Ms. Bodicker or Mr. Ferguson?
I do.
Member Brindle?
Hi, Emily.
Hi.
So, when it says it'll be open from May to September, does that mean May 1st to September 30th, or...
Seasonally, and that's weather dependent, is how I understand it.
Okay. So, that's really where my question comes in, and seasonally. So, let's say we have a beautiful October. If they want to be open in October because it's still nice out, what would they have to do?
Well, what their request is not based, that was generally their thinking of when they'll be open, the approval wouldn't be contingent on certain months of the year, just times of the day.
Oh, okay, so the approval is not for May to September?
No.
That's just when they think of it?
That's generally their plan for when they'll be open.
Ah, okay, okay, great. Well, that was my question then. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Bodicker at this point in time, or for Mr. Ferguson? All right, standby. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and testify with regard to the proposed conditional use permit that would be issued ostensibly to Lifetime Fitness? Hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a second? Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. This would be a motion with regard to Resolution 2018-65, which would approve a conditional use permit for Lifetime Athletic at 250 Southdale Center, subject to certain conditions, seven conditions that are described in the resolution itself. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the Resolution 2018-59, as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Mr. Ferguson, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about Lifetime? And how you're coming on the construction project? We keep dreaming and thinking about this state-of-the-art facility we're going to have.
Yeah. Well, we started construction a couple weeks ago. It's underway in earnest. It's going well.
First of all, why don't you give us your full name and business address?
Scott Ferguson. 1-818-5-HUMMINGBIRD-RO, DEEP HAVEN, MINNESOTA, 55391. And I'm a Development Manager for Lifetime Fitness.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, it's going well.
Three weeks in.
Yeah, three weeks in, it's a giant hole in the ground. You know, preparing for footings and foundations, et cetera.
We had quite a bit of abatement work to do, so it took a while to get to this point.
Right, the J.C. Penney's, you know, was an older building and did have some, you know, asbestos-containing materials, and that was abated flawlessly, and...
What's the projected completion date?
You know, I would venture to say the fourth quarter of 2019.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Weather permitting.
All right.
Of course.
So I'm just going to give you a heads up that you may get a call from the Business Journal. They want to do a...
Sure.
They want to do...
Welcome any calls.
A program in September at Golden Valley Country Club. They want to have it on the south suburban area, and they wanted to include Lifetime.
Sure.
So I'll get your contact information from...
I have a card, yeah, and Mr. Neal has my information as well.
If you leave your card with the clerk, I'll make sure that the Business Journal has your contact information.
No problem, no problem. Any other questions?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be beautiful.
And thanks for the approval, by the way.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks.
We're going to move on now to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. The first matter there tonight is a conversation with our Sustainability Coordinator, Tara Brown, and a presentation by our Energy and Environment Commissioner, Melissa Sealy, on residential organics recycling. Ms. Brown, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tonight I come before you because waste is a large sustainability topic. In 2017, council charged the commission and staff to review overall waste and present a report last year. In this report, one of the key findings was diverting organics from landfills is critical to not only ensuring not overfill of landfills, driving up costs, utilizing and being able to utilize renewable resources, but also reducing methane emissions and other GHG emissions. Because of this, council charged the Energy Environment this year to look at organic recycling policies and their options. Tonight, Commissioner Sealy is submitting the staff report on policy options, along with the EEC's review and comment.
Good, thanks, Ms. Brown. Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here this evening to fulfill item number four on the Energy and Environment Commission's work plan, which is review and comment on policy options for residential organics recycling. The issue of organics recycling has come front and center as the next logical step in the ongoing effort to address waste. In Hennepin County, food waste comprises at least 25% of household waste, which is the largest part of waste, and even more once you add in compostable items such as tissues, paper towels, and compostable wares. Both Hennepin County and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency have made organics a top priority. Hennepin County will mandate that residents have an opportunity for organics collection by 2022. The city's stated goal in the 2018-19 budget work plan was to determine a strategy and timeline for meeting waste reduction goals with residential organics recycling. The Energy and Environment Commission has reviewed the report put together by staff and agree that citywide curbside organics collection is the best course of action to meet council's stated goal of increasing the residential recycling rate. As stated by one of our commissioners, quote, "A fundamental component of greenhouse gas reduction is to keep organics out of landfills. I'm sensitive to the cost of organics recycling to Edina residents, but the hidden cost of continuing to send food waste to landfills and the true cost of not recycling organics is greater," end quote. In our review of all the possible collection methods, the commission decided that adding a curbside organics collection program similar to the recycling is the optimal solution. This type of program can be tested in other, has been tested in other communities, and is the most effective way to increase organics recycling in Edina. With the recycling contract ending in 2019, the timing of adding organics to the request for proposal process is an optimum use of our resources. As stated earlier, our neighboring communities of St. Louis Park and Minneapolis, as well as cities across the country, have already adopted curbside organics collection as a service to their residents. Curbside programs expand the items individuals can compost and is the most convenient way for residents to take advantage of the service. Many residents in Edina already contract for organics collection through their refuse hauler, so there would be no learning curve for those residents, and they could even be a resource to others, as education will be a crucial component of the program's success. Some of the best education resources may be our students. Our school district was a leader in organics collection and has had a program in place for over 10 years. This has exposed thousands of Edina residents to the concept of waste separation beyond recycling. Adding organics across the community reinforces the good habits our students practice daily in our schools. So, tonight, we ask council to make a motion directing staff to prepare a policy encompassing curbside organics recycling and to include the new organic service with the next recycling bid.
Questions for Commissioner Sealy? With regard to this proposal from our commission, Member Staunton?
So, thanks for your work on this. It's a terrific product, and I agree with you that this is the direction we're headed if you think back 10 or 20 years when no one was recycling, and now everyone's recycling, and it's really following the same pattern. So I think we're on the right track. A few questions, just in terms of logistics. One thing that I noticed in the report, and I'd be interested in any elaboration anyone can provide, is just the, for lack of a better word, the marketplace, you know, where does it go once it leaves the curbside? And is there a robust marketplace of folks who are digesting, if you will, the organic materials?
So currently, in the Twin Cities, there are two processing facilities. I was just at one last week then, and they at least just doubled the size of their capacity to process organics. So, from a processing perspective, there is plenty of infrastructure in place already.
Okay, good. I mean, I expect with Hennepin County moving in the direction they are, and other cities will follow, that's going to be important so that there's not a traffic jam of materials.
Right.
I'd hate to be at the place where they get left. The other question is, as we think about, I understand the recommendation is to do something similar to the recycling. Are we going to invite multiple different ways of doing that? The things that come to mind for me are combining. In other words, you know, I'd hate to have another truck running up and down the street if there's a way to have one truck that gets your recycling and your compost. The other notion is, I know there are some private haulers who have done this but may not be able to do the whole city, and so is there any notion of maybe doing quadrants or giving those? I would hate to see the folks who've led the industry in providing this get left out in the cold because they're not big enough to take on the whole city. And so those are a couple of things. I'm just curious if you've given any thought to.
Yeah, we have, and I know Tara has met with some of the haulers. And so, I mean, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think these are some of those issues that will be fleshed out during the RFP process, and we are, you know, obviously cognizant of all those issues, and will be working to make that be as smooth and painless for everyone as possible.
And I suppose that's, I mean, what you're asking us for is the authority to issue an RFP, and in the RFP, you could certainly invite the creativity and efficiency and...
Absolutely.
You know, the other notion, I was talking with your colleague, Paul Hushen, from the Energy and Environment Commission, and he, you know, he's in the waste management business, and he was talking, and this isn't necessarily directly to this point, but he was talking about the whole logistics thinking. I mean, we send these trucks out empty, and then we fill them up and go somewhere else. Is there, it'd be great if somewhere along the line we figured out a way to make both trips be efficient so that we're not, you know, we're all trying to, we're trying to surround all of these GHG and environmental issues, and if there's some way, I don't know how you can bring something to somebody when they're taking back garbage, but...
Right, I agree.
But it's something worth thinking about in the long run. So, thanks for your work.
Member Stewart?
Thank you. And thank you and your fellow commissioners for a great report. Tara Brown, thank you as well. This is really important, and so one of the things, I endorse the questions asked by Member Staunton, and I think those are all good questions. The people who currently are able to recycle organics are using VeerCan as their trash hauler. The recommendation here is to have organics recycling the next time we bid out our recycling. Currently, the people who are getting organics recycling are doing it through their trash hauling. Is it better to pair it with the trash hauling, or better to pair it with the organics recycling, or is that something we also still need to figure out?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think, and please correct me if I'm... Go ahead.
What's nice about pairing it with recycling versus waste is the fact that there is an education hill to meet for some people. Just as Councilmember Staunton said, 10 or 20 years ago, people were learning how to recycle, some even the last decade. So by pairing it with recycling, we are able to give that consistent service and that education to help people ensure that they're putting the right things in so that that can be organically recycled. that can be organically recycled and reused and put back into the marketplace.
So, it seems to me that if I'm collecting organics for recycling, I'm going to want to have those picked up at least once a week, and not every two weeks, the way we have our recycling currently picked up. And this idea of sort of combining things, so maybe one truck could pick up multiple things, I think Veerkant is able to do that today for their systems. If we have a, would we be having the same bidder for both organics and non-organic recycling, or would we have different bid processes for the organics and for the recycling?
I think that that's still all up for debate when the RFP gets put together. I mean, you know, we can craft it really how we want, but with room for some of those, I mean, there could be a hauler that has some great new innovative idea that we don't know about, you know? So I think going through that RFP process will allow for all sorts of combinations of the way things get picked up and...
Well, as I say, it's great work. I think the fact that we still have some of these questions, this is good. These are things we need to wrestle with, and I think we'll get there. There's, I think we have a will to get there, so we thank you for the progress so far.
Member Staunton?
Just one more question. I know, Tara, I think you included in your memo the fact that pursuing this option would require an addition of an FTE, and it's, I don't know if it's a question for you or for Manager Neil, have we thought through the budgeting and how you'd go about paying for that? Is that something that you'd fold into the cost, or how are we managing that?
Members Staunton, members of council, and I think we haven't done a lot of analysis into that FTE position yet, but my early thoughts are that is how we would do it. It's a position that would be funded by that service itself. We try to do that whenever we can. We would blend those costs into whatever household charge we would attach to this.
And given that that's, that that position would have, I understand the educational component and the outreach, is there, is it envisioned that over time that may become less at a full time, or that position could take on other duties?
There's definitely a potential. There are other things that need to be educated and shared out more, or more measurement and analysis that can be done, so definitely writing that for that flexibility. I want to point out as well that the two cities that do have curbside organics recycling have two or more people working full-time on this, so we interviewed them and we took their learnings to go ahead and make this recommendation to try and run it as efficient as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Me.
All right.
I do.
Go ahead, Member Brendel.
Thank you. Residential and commercial. So, we've got six, I think, trash haulers listed on the website, and they provide service to residential. And we've got weekly recycling, and that provides service to residential. So, we have a large commercial contingent here, a lot of restaurants that are going to produce organic waste. How do we roll them into this and make sure that we're doing a full community look on this?
Yeah, we can certainly look at that in the process as we write out what are those bidding requirements. I will say, most restaurants actually make money or already have a function to take that out, so a lot you'll hear...
So they're already selling their waste?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But I think it's a great point to still reach out and ensure if there are any opportunities...
Yeah, you've got senior residences, I don't know if they fall into that category or not, but everybody needs to be served by something so that their organic waste is managed. Okay, thanks.
Member Fisher?
I think all the great questions have been asked. I just want to say, this is really good work and very thorough, and I look forward to moving this forward.
Thank you.
I would join all my colleagues, and thank you for some work really well done. Look forward to this next stage of making ourselves even a more sustainable city, so I think this is great. Any other questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion directing staff, I suppose in conjunction with the commission, to prepare a policy encompassing curbside organics recycling and include the new organic service with the next recycling bid.
So moved.
A motion of second on the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are on to... Thank you, everybody. Director Teague, we're going to get an AUAR update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you is this AUAR update. What this is, is an environmental review for the Pentagon Park area. As most of the council, I believe, was around 10 years ago when we were looking at development of the Pentagon Park area. Because of the size of that development that was proposed back then, an environmental review was required. So in 2007, this alternative urban area-wide review was done by WSB and associates to look at not only Pentagon Park, but we expanded the boundaries to reach all the way to France, south to the border of Bloomington. What this environmental review does is contemplate development scenarios within that district, and what are the impacts and the mitigation measures that are required for development in that area. When development doesn't occur, this environmental review needs to be updated every five years. We did an update five years ago, and again, no development has occurred, so we're needing to update it again on the chance that no development occurs within Pentagon Park. So Andy Moffett with WSB actually did the review 10 years ago. She did the update five years ago and is here to present the update today. Our goal here is to submit the AUAR to adjacent communities for their review and comment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andy Moffett.
Thank you. Ms. Moffett, welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm back again every five years to come talk to you about the Gateway Area AUAR update. And as Mr. Teague indicated, this is an environmental review process that is, there's guidelines provided by the state on how to do an AUAR and the reasons why you do one. And so, this is 135-acre area. The original AUAR, as mentioned, was done in 2007, and I have that original copy here. We don't actually print these so much anymore as we did 10 years ago, but you can see it's a pretty hefty document, it is double-sided. And when we've done the two updates, they are considerably thinner documents, so it's not, the updates are very efficient, very efficient in a way, this is actually a very efficient way to do environmental review, so individual development does not need to do their own environmental review, and you can look at a region as a whole, as well as look at different development scenarios to determine what, if any, impacts there might be. So, this is 135-acre area between Minnesota Drive 100 and France and the former Fred Richards Golf Course on the north as well. So again, it evaluates different development scenarios. It does include a very specific mitigation plan related to all the areas that are looked at in the environmental review, and it is updated every five years. Again, the city has been very diligent about keeping this environmental review document, which allows you the flexibility related to when and if development, redevelopment does occur in this area. So, what's involved in preparing the original AUAR and then also looking at those areas as you do the update is a whole host of different items. There's traffic, air, and noise, stormwater, wastewater, water use, parks and trails, erosion, historical items as well. So that was looked at in the original AUAR, and then every five years you do an update to determine if something is new, has something changed, has development occurred in the area. So this document, the original document, and has been carried through, through the different updates, there are four different scenarios. Number one is a scenario in conformance with your comprehensive plan. Scenario two is a master plan at the time in 2007, and some of those concepts have still moved forward. And then to provide flexibility, the document looked at a maximum commercial scenario and then a maximum residential scenario, as those have different impacts related to sewer, water, traffic, and other aspects. Through all this updating, the scenarios have not changed. We've not needed to change those because these four provided you the flexibility you need to look at different redevelopment within that area. So, this was the comprehensive plan. Scenario one is outlined in your comp plan. This was the master plan, we're looking at the Pentagon Towers and the Pentagon Quad area here and here. What if, this is the scenario three, of what happens if it's maximum residential? And then the last scenario was what if we maximize commercial in the area? So, again, the update evaluates what has developed, and what has developed since 2013, there was a 68,000-square-foot medical office redevelopment that occurred in the northwest corner of that study area. Previous to that, there was a lot of redevelopment surrounding this 135 acres, but nothing within it specifically. It evaluates the stated mitigation measures, so is there something that needs to change? Is there something that needs to be updated? There is some minor updates that were done as outlined in the update. We look at if there's environmental review that needs to be updated, if there's newer changed information, so things like, there's been wastewater improvements over the past 10 years in the area. The Nine Mile Creek watershed has some new rules that are referred to in here, and in both updates, we did do an updated traffic study to determine if things are different or changed, or if we need new mitigation. So, and then with the update, what happens is there's a 10-working-day agency and public comment period that not only goes to the adjoining communities, but it goes out to about 20 agencies, such as Pollution Control Agency, the Department of Natural Resources, Department of Transportation, the watershed districts, et cetera. So, the next steps are reviewing this with you tonight. If authorized, it will be sent out for a 10-day, working-day public comment period. Once the comments come back, we work with the city to review and respond to comments, and then the document comes back to the council for an adoption, which, if adopted, then becomes your required environmental review for the next five years. So with that...
All right, questions for Ms. Moffett? It'll be back in front of us at a future point in time for potential approval, but folks may have some questions now with regard to the, with the update, all the things that are covered. Anyone? Member Brendel?
I guess one of the things that we are actively talking about is the location of shared parking on the north side of Pentagon Park, and the thought that we might cross the property line or allow the developer to cross the property line to put some of, or at least a portion of that parking spans on the park property. How does that affect the AUAR? Is the AUAR not focused on specific property lines, or how does that, are we restricted, or what do you need to know about that, if we're talking about that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the AUAR is at a higher level than that, so what you do specifically in that level of detail with redevelopment in that area, you will not be tied by the AUAR. The AUAR is, here is a broad brush look at different land uses and densities, and therefore, do we need to upgrade sewer and water? Do we need turn lanes, those kinds of things? But that level of detail would come, you would be looking at that with a specific development plan, and that you would not be tied by anything in the AUAR related to that.
Great, thank you.
Other questions at this point in time? I've got maybe just one general question that may involve, well, will involve multiple parts. So I'm thinking about, when we think about infrastructure, we think about transportation systems, stormwater management, and for me, then sewer, you know, wastewater management, I guess would be a better way to put it. So, is there anything, I'll back up. The study originally showed that we, I think we needed a bigger, I'll call it a bigger pipe going down into Bloomington off the south parcel. We needed some road improvements done depending upon the level of development on the south parcel and the north parcel at Pentagon Park, and then stormwater management was a part of the original AUAR and also the update. So you've got this kind of urban environmental assessment vehicle that's being used here. So are you seeing anything so far in the work that you're doing that's giving you pause or concern with regard to transportation infrastructure, wastewater management, or stormwater management?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there isn't anything that we're seeing that's going to give pause or an issue, provided the mitigation measures are followed depending on the development scenario that occurs. There have been wastewater improvements that have been going on, and I know the city engineering staff have been working closely with the city of Bloomington lately related to how all of those, how that wastewater moves through the system. So, with an AUAR, it does allow the city to look out and plan for potential infrastructure that might need to happen and be prepared for that, and then also work with developers as they come in for redevelopment to allocate which parts of those improvements they may be responsible for as well.
All right, so when you look from trunk highway 100 all the way to France Avenue east-west, and from Fred Richards down to Bloomington, north to south, in that 135-acre area of our community, what I hear you saying is be mindful of the mitigation measures that are proposed in the original and the updated AUAR as you look at development in that area, regardless of whether it's Pentagon Park or somewhere else, within that 135-acre piece of our town.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is correct, and as redevelopment may occur, those redevelopments do need to abide by the mitigation plan, because if they don't, you have to update your AUAR again. So, the mitigation has been laid out so you can understand what the infrastructure improvements might be needed for all of those things in order to accommodate a full redevelopment of that area.
All right, good, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, I just would add that this is a range of scenarios, so the mitigations are going to depend on the range of scenarios that the council approves.
Indeed.
So if it's lower densities, it's going to be less mitigation if it's on the high end, so just keep that in mind also.
I think the plan was drafted that way, too, the AUAR originally, that it covered a range of possibilities in terms of level of development that would occur in that 135-acre area.
If this much happens, this is the traffic stuff that needs to be done if this much. Yep.
That's a good point. Thank you for that. Okay, Ms. Moffett, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are on to, oh, excuse me. I turned the page too quickly. So we need a motion authorizing staff to distribute the AUAR for public comment. Got a motion of second to authorize staff to distribute the AUAR for public comment. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we have a resolution that we have every meeting, and that is a resolution accepting various grants and donations. This is embodied in Resolution 2018-60. It's a motion to accept donations on behalf of the city of Edina as embodied in Resolution 2018-60. So moved.
Second?
We've got an enthusiastic motion and second.
Do.
And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was good. That was good. That was impressive. That was a real rally. Rally back, yeah. Opposed, carried.
It's not even nine o'clock.
And it's only, you know...
You should have plenty of energy.
Enthusiasm here. There's a park and rec donation, countryside school PTO, $350 for the Ann Dickey Memorial. Thank you very much, and it will be posted on the website. And we are on to correspondence and petitions. Manager Neil, anything that has come in while the council's been meeting this evening?
No, there isn't.
All right. Everything else was on the dais, I'm sure, or provided beforehand? So, any aviation noise update, Member Brendel?
Before we get to that, there is a second item under correspondence and petitions...
Oh, thank you.
Which is the open-to-business report. I don't know that this was meant to be discussed, but we... I don't know that this was meant to be discussed, but we did receive it and so-
Manager Neil? Yeah, thank you. Any comment there? I don't have any notation on it in my agenda saying you want to-
The open to business program is a program through Hennepin County. They have several locations where they, they, where city halls or provide them a location to set up shop and they see new entrepreneurs and try to guide them through the process of setting up small business. We provide them a place here in City Hall and I believe it's once a month if I remember right. And we don't charge them anything for that. We just let them be here and they set up all their own appointments. We just provide them a place to be.
Nice.
And we're happy to do it.
That's great.
Good. All right. Aviation noise update. We've still got some, I guess?
We, we have aviation as a matter of fact.
And aviation noise as well?
Yes, and some noise. And the, the next meeting is Thursday this week at 1:30 at the MAC headquarters. So more to come.
All right. Manager Neil, anything further on that issue?
Nothing further on that from me.
Council comments, Member Fisher?
I have nothing.
Member Stottan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of items. One, on our consent agenda tonight, there was an item about a crossing at, in the traffic study, the Traffic Safety Committee, an item on crosswalk and interlocking, kind of getting from that neighborhood to the north of interlocking across. And it just caught my eye because I think, you know, we're going to have a new development at that corner where the Jiffy Lube used to be. And we are, we're trying to balance this ability to get folks smoothly to Highway 100 to go to work and back again. But also, we've built this beautiful sidewalk on the south side of interlocking and I know from time to time I've heard from residents that that's a particularly tricky street because it's got some sightline issues because of the hills and the curves that, and I, I just wanted to raise the issue with staff and think, you know, just be, I, I think we're going to need to do more thinking about that as it's going on. I don't know if you've already been doing that or if you've got some ideas about the direction it's going, but we're, you know, as that new project comes online, hopefully we're going to be, and as we're making more transformations in the Grandview area, hopefully we're going to be attracting people to crossing that road and trying to balance this car versus pedestrian environment. And I don't, I mean, if you got some thoughts off the top of your head, Director Milner, I'd be interested, but otherwise I just wanted to flag the issue as something that we need to be thinking about.
Mayor, members of council, and Councilmember Stottan, I think the thing, what we're looking at is the bike and ped master plan. Ideally, let's not have them cross there. Let's have a facility on that north side, get them up to the intersection of Vernon or somewhere where it is safer-
And have them cross up there.
And better. So I think looking at that overall plan, but then these crossings are going to have to occur in the meantime. So how do we make these a little bit safer in the, in that interim condition?
Terrific. Well, thank you for being, thinking ahead on that. That makes total sense to me and I think folks are going to be interested in the neighborhood. The other issue I just wanted to raise is a funny issue that just independently, I had two people raise this issue with me in the last week and so I thought I'd pass it along that, that we have a blanket no parking requirement in the city or six-hour parking limit or something everywhere in all residential all year round. And I totally get it and I think everybody who's talked to me gets it for the winter time for snow plowing, but in the summertime, it seems like it's a one-size-fits-all. I get where we might have some neighborhoods where it's not where we need to have that. For instance, we've had this high school issue that we're trying to grind through, but, but in other issues, other neighborhoods, I think folks say, you know, what if I have somebody staying overnight? What if I, you know, and, and I just wanted to raise that issue, see if anybody else has heard anything about this issue and if, or if staff has been pinged on this issue from time to time.
Mm-hmm, every year.
We hear about it all the time.
We did a speak up Edina topic recently on the six hour-
Maybe that's what drove some of it.
Topic and I think a lot of the comments were, we didn't even know we had it.
Yeah, right.
PD can maybe speak, the enforcement is not, it's usually a complaint basis, right? If someone stays overnight and there's one car in the street, they're not looking for that. One local parked out there unless there's a-
Yeah, and I get that, although it's a little bit of a consolation because then you run the risk that if you leave it out there, you get tagged or something like that. So I, I just, I'm not sure.
But don't worry if you have a vigilant neighbor.
Yeah. Well, and so in your neighborhood, it's dangerous to do. So I don't know if, if that's something we ought to revisit or what, what, I mean, if the city manager has any thoughts on that or if it's something, we don't have to do it tonight, but I just thought I'd raise it.
Well, I, I think we'll, we can discuss it at our staff level and see what, what we've done historically, because this is a subject that does have a, a pretty regular history to it. It does come up. There's, there's discussion about it and we tend to kind of fall back to the, to the historical precedent, but let me, let me pull together some information on that for you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. So we all just got another letter from the city of Edina about service line warranty. And that continues to be a confusing topic because it comes out on city letterhead, looks like the city's promoting it, looks like it's something that you work with the city on, and we really, I mean, we're party to it like that much. It's a real, it's the National League of Cities that recommends it, that promotes it. The idea was brought to our council a couple of years ago and we were kind of ambivalent about it, as I recall, but we thought we'd give it a try. I think that the way the program rolls out is very confusing. If it is not something the city's involved in, the city has nothing to do with contracting service line warranty insurance for a resident. I just don't see why it has to come out on city letterhead and make people think that the city says you have to do this or the city wants you to do this. So I, I would really like to have us rethink the, we thought we'd give it a try, we've given it a try, it doesn't, I don't know, it doesn't feel right to me. And I guess the other part of that question, for someone who does want to upgrade their service line and therefore get service line warranty insurance, how would they do it? And how would they know it's available if they didn't, if they weren't made aware of it?
Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Member Brindle, to be very clear, this, this solicitation from Service Line Warranty of America does not come out on city letterhead. I know that people have said that and, and I know that the first letter that came out had kind of a, a look of city letterhead, but we've made very significant changes to that letter since the first version of it. It does not resemble city letterhead at this point.
Comes out in the city envelope.
It does not come out in the city.
Does it have the city, the logo on it? I had a fellow leave me a voicemail.
Yeah, I mean-
I think I'll, I'd like to ask Ms. Bennerott if she'll comment on that because she worked pretty closely with them and pushed them pretty hard to, regarding look and feel of this letter, including some pretty significant language changes as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. According to the contract that you approved, they are allowed use of our logo. In the first iteration of the letter, I, I equated it to them trying to simulate our letterhead. In the second two letters, again, we worked very hard to make sure they did not do that. The logo no longer appears in the upper area. It's kind of boxed in with the content for that very reason. And we also made sure that the, the signature was not made to look like it was from a city official, that it was someone from SW LA and that the envelope did not look like it was coming from the city. But contractually, we're obligated to allow them use of our logo on their materials.
By this time, we're, we're in the process of getting the, the numbers for you so you can see, but there are a few thousand people who have signed up for this coverage. And we do have, we do have some residents who are bothered by it because they think it, it, it represents, that the city has some kind of connection, a more connection to it than we do have. They don't want to see any city involvement in it. I, I do understand that. But we do have quite a, quite a few people who have actually signed up for this coverage. They sign up for it directly through the Service Line Warranty of America program. We don't, we don't play any role in that at all. And there is a, there is a license fee that does come back to the city for every policy that is, that is sold, 50 cents per month per account comes back to the city. Right now, that equals about a little, almost $14,000 that, that we have and we have segregated that money into a, a special account that we will use for, to help people with sewer backups in their basement. When we can't put our finger on whose fault is this, we want to help people get it cleaned up just from a public health standpoint and that's what we'll use that money for.
Okay, well, if there's a way to, on the city website, connect people with that insurance without sending this message, sending this mail out whenever it comes out, I guess I'd, like to look at that arrangement and, and bring it back to the council to see if we want to continue with that.
Director Bennerott?
Also, as part of the contract, they are allowed to send mailings three times a year each of the three years of the contract. So we, we have asked that we just, can we not send as many or can we make clear in mailing one that they also offer two other types of coverage? So it's not three different mailings, about three different types of coverage that they offer, but we, we really have only been able to make those requests because we did sign the contract that way.
Okay, so we're in year one of a three-year contract.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I have two other things. Thank you very much for that.
What was, to that, just seguing off that question about terms and conditions, what was the consideration that we received as a city for signing a three-year contract with them? I don't recall.
We received a license fee of 50 cents per, policy per month sold. And that's, and that's for year one has been right around $13,860.
So can we put something on our website that discloses that because-
Certainly.
People, we do, I've had a voicemail from somebody who thinks that's really sneaky, you know, that we're not being transparent about that.
We've been transparent about that from the beginning.
We, we are very sensitive to the concerns residents have had about this and we have had some articles in past and upcoming issues of Public Works Pipeline, our newsletter put out by the Public Works Department. We have a pretty robust frequently asked question document about this program on our website and we do have some brochures and other collateral material here at City Hall and available for us to mail out to residents who have other questions about it.
Great, thank you. So I've sent a couple emails to Director Milner and the roundabouts that are going in are, the landscaping is really beautiful. And when the weeds take over, they need to be, they need to be taken care of. The Valley View Roundabout at Braemar, I sent a note and, I mean, it was like the next day that the weeding was done. So thank you. And now it's the gardens around the roundabout that were planted at the same time. There are some really aggressive weeds, one of them being wild mustard and one, once it, and it's all the way along Valley View. So while you can, you can get rid of it in the area of the roundabout garden, it's all along Valley View. So it's a little like, it's, it's probably as bad as buckthorn in keeping out the good, the good greenery that would naturally be there. But when you go to a state park, when you go, when we hike Superior Hiking Trail, they have the clean your boots off to get these various seeds off your boots, that's what you're getting off your boots. And so they're really, in the parks, they're really trying to control it. And it is here with a vengeance, so if we can look at those, I don't know what it takes. I don't know if we have staffing to do that or if it's adopting a roundabout or if it's what it-
There you go.
Yeah, I'm, it, I'm sort of thinking that I could just bring my wheelbarrow down there and-
Get that, get Diane Plunkett Latham over there, that whole Comanche court group.
All I would have to say is there are weeds there and she would be out there.
Die buckthorn scum.
Yeah, exactly.
If I could just add to that, as long as you're on that topic, I've, I've had some correspondence with folks in my neighborhood talking about, I mean, and the gateway elements, they're all beautiful, but they're just a ton of maintenance, right? And weeds move faster than people can move sometimes. So I think there might be something to this because I don't think we can keep adding staff to cover every weed in town and yet these things are important gateway elements. If, I don't know if there's some sort of method we could use where there's some volunteer component, or does that become a liability because they're key intersections with traffic? I, I think there's a balance that we can strike. We, I'm very hesitant to put people out into the middle of a roundabout with moving traffic around it. We want that to be done by paid people who will take direction from us. But on other, on other areas like those, like those gardens around the edge of it, that's perf, that's perfect for, that's a perfect opportunity for volunteers if, if we have some that would help us with that.
All right.
We do have summer staff that, that do come together and help us. We've had some, we've had some trouble having those staff. It's a pretty competitive labor environment right now and so we've had some trouble filling some of those positions, but, but yeah, we, I think there's probably opportunity for that.
Okay. The last thing-
On that gateway, yeah, you've hit on a great topic. The gateway elements that you're talking about coming into 70th off 100 and then going westbound on Metro, I mean, Director Milner's heard this from me already. Those gardens were created by committee and what you have right by Christ Presbyterian is a potentially beautiful median space where the, now the grasses that people decided we should plant in there are as tall as the trees that are in that, in that space. And I think about half the trees are dead. They were killed by rabbits, according to our forester, both on the west side and the east side. So I, I'd like to see something addressed in there too to beautify those things, but the grasses that were picked are way, way too tall. It's, you know, they're just out of scale with everything. Or the trees are too short, one of the two. Because, could go either way on that one.
Okay.
And, or they're dead and short.
The rabbits are starting to grass, not tree.
Oh, man.
So anyway, sorry.
We can, we'll discuss that with them.
That's all right. I have two potentially quick other things. Vernon Avenue beautification. I had a gentleman talk to me the other day and in the area of Jerry's and Grandview, Vernon Avenue has gardens on both sides and, but as you go south on Vernon, it's, there's, it, it's people's property and it's the easement to people's property and they've got a fence and it's weeds, et cetera, et cetera. And so as we've got an increased focus on beautification, as they drive down Vernon Avenue, they're saying, well, what can we do about this? So I don't know if there is anything or if we can start a campaign Vernon Avenue, Vernon Avenue beautification and get people to think about what their property looks like from Vernon Avenue. But, but it's starting to generate a little bit of, of conversation.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Member Stewart?
Oh, one last thing.
Oh, yeah.
One last thing. And that is we're hearing about coyotes living in the Indian Hills area. I was in contact with Tim Hunter recently. He is the animal control officer for the city. It is. And there are two young families of coyotes in the Indian Hills area. And so the department is tracking them and, and they're watching them. They haven't threatened anybody yet, but, but of course, when a person sees a coyote, they feel like they're being threatened. And so I have shared some of the hazing techniques with the neighbors and said, you know, you just have to make them feel unwelcome.
Could you demonstrate some of those words?
I'll put out a video. How's that? But truly, there are some, just make noise, flash your lights, throw something out there, just really get their attention and let them know that they're unwelcome because they, they are feeling entirely too comfortable. because they, they are feeling entirely too comfortable close to us.
Good, yeah, thank you. Member Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, it's been a while since our last city council meeting, since we did not have one at the beginning of July. Um, a few things have happened. On the June twenty-first, I attended the grand opening for the Lodin, a new apartment complex on Lincoln Drive. They welcomed me even though I voted against their project, so they were very nice. July fourth, uh, Independence Day, I love this celebration in Edina and the way Edina does it. Unfortunately, we got some rain this year, um, but I just want to say thank you to all of the volunteers and the people who work so hard, uh, for the parade and for the fireworks and the music and everything else. Uh, Member Brindle, you included. Um, it just, it's a, a, just a fantastic celebration. And I love the, the community sense of the whole thing, so.
Yeah, we held the, the parade about twenty minutes until lightning was far enough away, and that's when we went.
There have been some meetings recently for the Fiftieth and France Small Area Planning Group and for the Greater Southdale Area Small Planning, uh, Group. Um, and I think those have been well-attended. And also, just a reminder that we have our HRA meetings now on the second and fourth Thursday mornings at seven-thirty in the morning. And the next one will be July twenty-sixth. We've had some long meetings, and they, we've had to extend them uh, because we generally are trying to finish by nine in the morning on those mornings. Upcoming events, uh, August seventh will be the Night to Unite, uh, which is a Tuesday. So, um, I, another great community event, great to get together neighborhood by neighborhood. And, uh, so looking forward to that. And that means that our next city council meeting will be on a Wednesday, on Wednesday, August the eighth. I did have a note to flag one issue, but it was already flagged by, in the community comment. And I think I heard, uh, Manager Neil say that he's already talked to Director Bennerott about it, which is the idea of, of video recording the HRA meetings. So thank you for that. That's it.
Good, thank you. Um, joining you and commenting on the Fourth of July parade, I thought you and, uh, Member Staunton were, uh...
Two thousand two hundred ice pops.
Wonderful duo in the parade, and you had a lot of, you, you froze up your hand, your son's hands as he passed out those, what were they?
Ice pops.
Ice pops, yeah. And I was looking around for Mary Brindle until I finally found her. She was hollering at me to get moving.
I was!
So we got moving and, uh...
Yeah, the interviewer was, uh, I, I think was not a seasoned interviewer.
I was!
Um, the night before, we had a great veterans dinner, uh, out at Braemar, um, and, uh, Dave Anderson, who used to, uh, have Famous Dave's, now has this, uh, what is it, old Southern barbecue down on Forty-Fourth and France? And the food was just terrific, and the veterans really appreciated all their companions. Denny Schulstedt and John Curry gave just terrific, uh, comments, I thought, and the whole evening was so enjoyable. Um, and then followed by the Fourth of July parade the next day. And that's the first time I've experienced rain in years I've done it, so that was really unusual. But, but half the parade was dry, I'd say, uh, even though we weren't, yeah, even though we weren't. And then, uh, just prior to that, uh, Member Stewart got me thinking about the, the period of time that's elapsed since we last met. Uh, went to a funeral for, a memorial service for Ron Meshprecher, who was a longtime lawyer in town. A terrific guy, died on, uh, memorial service was on the twenty-eighth of June. And, uh, just filled with people and, uh, judges that were lauding him as a person and a, and a lawyer. Quite a, quite a guy. Um, and then on the eleventh and twelfth of, uh, July, I attended the, uh, there's a foundation in Kansas City called the Ewing Kaufman Foundation. Ewing Kaufman was an entrepreneur in Kansas City in the forties, uh, was in the pharmaceutical business, uh, created some drugs that were enormous successes, and was a real supporter of, uh, Kansas City. Owned the Kansas City Royals baseball team for a while. Uh, they got a beautiful, um, uh, art museum there. It looks a little bit like the Sidney Opera House that his, that his daughter did for, his only child did for his wife Marion. And, and they have this entrepreneurship, uh, event, and they had mayors, they had a hundred and twenty mayors invited. Uh, and the Kaufman Foundation paid for travel, paid for hotel accommodations, took care of the food. And, and so we talked about, uh, the fact that entrepreneurship, you know, has been kind of a historic hero of our economy, uh, but it's been on the decline. And so one of the things that they've been working on at the Kaufman Foundation is to try to figure out, where is that synergy point between, uh, local government and entrepreneurs? And so, you know, these entrepreneurs and young businesses, and Member Stewart would know this better than any of us, they create nearly all new net jobs, and twenty percent of the, uh, gross job creation, uh, in the country comes from young businesses and entrepreneurs. So the notion of trying to build communities that make entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship accessible and inclusive, uh, the idea that maybe cities can figure out techniques that can be developed to support ecosystems, to maximize, uh, ways to promote this entrepreneurship is something that's intriguing and maybe something we can take up over time. I noticed an article in the paper today about the farm to, uh...
Farm to fork.
Farm to table.
Fork.
Farm to fork, uh, project they're doing, it's, uh, entrepreneurship-related in the food industry in St. Paul. And so I don't know if this was something that would work for us locally, or we could be a hub for regional activity. But I think it's the kind of thing our council would be interested in having more discussion on. Uh, they're going to come up from Kaufman in, um, I think sometime in September. And then there's a woman that's been helping the city of Kansas City on their entrepreneurship activities, and she said she'd be willing to come up here as well. So I'll keep all of you posted on that. And maybe it would be something that we do in conjunction with the Regional Council of Mayors and the ULI group. But I'll keep you all posted, and I think it's something that our team here would want to be thinking a little bit about, along with the chamber. So that's it for me. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, we have...
Oh, I had, excuse me. Manager Neil, this is for you. What's the status on Restoration Hardware and where's our new water plant design?
Uh, on, on those two things, first, the Restoration Hardware, uh, we're kind of wondering that ourselves. Um, from a staff standpoint, they had requested a, a design change where they, uh, they were bringing down the overall height of the building. There was a back and forth about whether, uh, we would support them, uh, with putting an EFIS surface on the building instead of STUCO. Uh, we convinced them that wasn't in their best interest either, so that, uh, they are going to bring a STUCO product here. But they're really, they, they, uh, they made some changes to the design of the building, not some...
They moved the wall.
They moved the wall, so, not substantial enough that it has to come back through council, but substantial enough that they needed to prepare new sets of plans for the building department. So that project is moving forward. It's just moving forward on a slower than, slower basis than, than we thought.
So somebody told me by rumor that we, that there had been discovered a, a major sewer line or water line down underneath where they wanted to put their basement.
Well, they're, they were well aware of that. Mr. Milner?
I mean, that was a line that we knew about.
Yeah, they knew about it.
That runs through that property.
We required them to do a pretty extensive analysis so they didn't tip over the water tower.
Yeah.
So they were well, it's already been moved. That, that work's already completed and went really well.
Okay, so that happened, but it was...
That's not impeding their project.
No, 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 they're, they've, they've done, in fact, they've done an enormous amount of work at that site. It just doesn't look like it. Most of it was done, you know, they dug a hole, they did some, a lot of utility work, they filled in the hole. It looks like nothing's happening there, but there's, there's a lot happening on the design side and the plan review side.
And then on the water plant?
On the water plant, uh, we're...
We're getting close to come back with an update for you. We're looking at some options, and we'll be back soon.
You pleased with the work that Snow is doing on it?
Yep, yep. We, uh, we didn't give them a real speedy timeline because they had other things. We said that's fine because we're working through our water supply plan at the same time to have some conversations with that. So we'll be back to council very soon to have a conversation.
And they, I'm sure they had to take some time to go and collect their National Firm of the Year award, so. I mean, seriously, they're, they're a good firm.
All right, Manager Neil.
Yes, um, we are expecting some, some rain, uh, this week. And we did get a note from, a notice from the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District that they, they are expecting some creek flooding, um, to happen with this. Even though they are managing the, the lake itself, and they've reduced the amount of outflow coming out of the lake, they are expecting that we're going to get enough rain that's going to surface drain into the creek that's going to cause some creek flooding. So just, uh, not, maybe not substantial, um, but we are hearing that directly from them, so just a heads up, but, on that. Night to Unite, uh, one of the things we've done with council members in the past is, if you are interested in, in participating directly as a guest of the, of the city, both either police or fire, and want to be part of a, of a, of a group that goes from party to party to party, uh, let us know that at your earliest convenience so that we can begin to figure out how to, how to, uh, put you in the right place at the right time for that night. If you don't wish to, you want to go to your own neighborhood event, uh, that's, that's great too. Uh, but if you do want to be part of a, part of a traveling, uh, group that goes from party to party, let us know that.
I'll, I'll let you know that right now.
Okay.
Do that for a while and then go to our own neighborhood party.
Great, yeah, and they can drop you off whenever you need to. Uh, the final thing is an update on Lime Bike. Um, they are making, they are making progress. Um, we, uh, they, they've been kind of looking around in town this week for places where they could, uh, start initially, put their bikes out, uh, for their initial drop. One thing, though, I, I wanted to make sure that we were all clear on together, both council and staff, is that, uh, is that these bikes are going to be dropped in places that are going to make people upset. We, we are a hundred percent sure of that. They're going to block a sidewalk, they're going to be in front of a business. The right thing to do about that is to call Lime Bike to come pick them up. We're not equipped, they're going to call City Hall, they're going to call you, and they're going to say, can't you send a park guy or a public works guy over there to pick up these bikes? And we really can't do that. We told Lime Bike when we made our agreement with them that we wouldn't do that uh, because we don't want our people putting them in a truck and damaging them, and where do they take them anyway? So the right thing to do is to, is to direct people to contact Lime Bike, to ask Lime Bike to come pick these up because they have, they are supposed to have, uh, employees and, and equipment designed to come pick up these bikes and to move them or to fix them or whatever it is. And that's the commitment we made to them in the agreement that we signed. So I, that, if, and if they can't do that, and if they can't manage their product in, in town as well as they say they're going to, then our option really ought to be to tell them not to be here. We don't know that there's going to, we're pretty sure there's going to be some, some rough spots as, as they start with their, with their, uh, their services here. Um, that's what we hear from other cities where they've been. But we got to get them started in the right direction, particularly, we want to make sure that we, we have our residents gauged in the right direction about how to get rid of these bikes if they're a problem.
There was an interesting article, I think it was in the Star Tribune, about them getting a late start for the summer and some frustration that other, uh, maybe it was even our cities. People had expressed frustration that they were missing half the summer here. And, and, uh, apparently, uh, they were slow getting their warehouse put together because they had, they didn't get the lease they thought they were going to get. And I, I think their financing has been stressed. They, they're a national deal, and I think they've extended into more places than they could afford.
Overcommitted, one might say. They, they, we have heard from them that they are not going to start with the electric scooters here that you've kind of heard stories about in, in Minneapolis and St. Paul. They are going to start with bikes, so.
So does, is our contract crafted in a way, either Manager Neil or Mr. Knutson, in a way where if they don't get these bikes picked up in a timely manner, we can terminate the pilot program?
I believe that's correct, right? Mr. Milner, you were more involved with them.
We have a thirty day, so if we notice that they're not up to it, we tell them. Thirty days later, they need to be gone.
You know, we started this as a pi, we've always talked about it being a pilot program. Um, and we want to acknowledge from the, from the start that we do expect them to have some trouble off the back because we heard, we've heard that from every city where they've been.
So you, yeah, you're in the, you're in the world of dockless versus dock.
Yeah.
And, um, there was a conversation about that at the US Conference of Mayors too, and they, there were some photos of Lime Bike from around the country that were, were just piles of them.
Yeah.
In parks and, and not good, and, uh, as opposed to Jump, which is docked. You know, you got to bring them back.
Or Nice Ride, which is docked.
I think Nice Ride's sold out now to maybe the Jump.
Yet they...
So...
Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody, that cause anything else, or anyone to want to talk about? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.